Good evening, and welcome to the regular twice monthly meeting of Westminster's mayor and common council. I'm pleased to note that as our community reopens, the mayor and council are once again able to meet publicly here in our chamber in City Hall. Even as our meetings become open to the public again, they will continue to be available and streamed live on the city's Facebook page, as well as the Community Media Center Channel and website. Now we'll begin every meeting as we do with the pledge of the flag followed by a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. For those interested in following along, copies of tonight's agenda and the entire information packet that the council will be using are available online on the city's website. First, we'll consider approval of the minutes. We have minutes from the meeting of the mayor and council on May 24th. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Second. There's been a motion by Ms. Gilbert and a second by Mr. DeHaas. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The ayes seem to have and the ayes have it, and the motion is adopted. We have one presentation tonight from the mayor, and Madam Mayor, I will turn it over to you.
Right, we have a proclamation tonight for July as Recreation and Parks Month, so I'd like to ask Ms. Gruber, please come over. I don't think I've got my reading glasses on.
Why don't you hold it out? I can hold it out every now and then.
It'll be too small. Alright, so, whereas parks and recreation programs are an integral part of communities throughout this country, including the city of Westminster, Maryland, and our parks and recreation programs are vitally important to establishing and maintaining the quality of life in our communities, ensuring the health of all citizens, and contributing to the economic and environmental well-being of a community and region, and parks and recreation programs build healthy, active communities that aid in the prevention of chronic disease, therapeutic recreation services for those who are mentally or physically disabled, and also improve the mental and emotional health of all citizens. And parks and recreation programs increase a community's economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of the local tax base, increased tourism, the attraction and retention of businesses, and crime reduction. And parks and recreation areas are fundamental to the environmental well-being of our community. And parks and natural recreation areas improve water quality, protect groundwater, prevent flooding, improve the quality of the air we breathe, provide vegetative buffers to development, and produce habitat for wildlife. And our parks and natural recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors. And the U.S. House of Representatives has designated July as Parks and Recreation Month, and the city of Westminster, Maryland recognizes the benefits derived from parks and recreation resources. Now therefore, I, Dr. Mona Becker, mayor of the city of Westminster, in conjunction with the common council, do hereby proclaim July as Park and Recreation Month in the city of Westminster, Maryland, adopted this day, 12th day of June 2021. There you go. I can hold it for Shannon, don't we? This is the first one, so. We do it this way. I'll hold this side.
And thank you.
Yep, thanks. Thank you. Would you like to say anything?
Just that we always look forward to serving our community, and we are planning an activity every day during the month of July, so please stay tuned to our website and Facebook page for details. Thank you.
Thank you, Andy.
Alright, thank you, Madam Becker, and thank you, Ms. Gruber, and to your entire team for doing such a great job for the citizens of Westminster on parks and recreation. We have one item on the consent counter this evening. May I have a motion?
I'll move it. I'll second it.
There's been a motion by Mr. Kabachi to approve the consent counter, and a second by Mr. DeHaas. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The ayes seem to have and the ayes have it, and the consent counter is adopted. Report from the mayor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I do have a few things I'd just like to say this evening, so I'll keep it brief, but first of all, I want to say thank you to all the city staff for being welcoming and helpful over the last four weeks as I've taken office. So it's been nice to get into the building, see some faces that I know, and meet some new people over the last several weeks, so I've really appreciated that as well, and for answering all my questions when I have them, so I do appreciate that. Just a second thing I'd like to touch on. Chief, I know I've spoken to you about this as well, that I've had really great reports about officers on bicycles in the city. I've heard a lot of positive comments from residents, and you know, I fully support these initiatives in community policing, and seeing the officers on bicycles have been really fantastic. The next thing, just real quick, last week on Wednesday, I welcomed the Carroll County Chamber of Commerce to 45 West Main Street, and this was probably the first organization that was not city-related that we had in our new administrative buildings. They held their executive board meeting there in the morning, and I encouraged them to get out and take a little tour of the building and spend a little bit of time there, and they really enjoyed it. And so I really look forward to opening that building up to the community and hosting some more outside groups within that space. I'm working with McDaniel College on the McDaniel Welcome, which will take place in August, which seems like it's far away, but it's not. I think it's probably within about eight weeks where there will be about 400 or so new freshmen on campus at McDaniel, and this is a program that Mayor Dominic had set up where he welcomed the students in Westminster for a day during their orientation. And then the last thing, I'm not going to talk too long on this in case someone else wants to talk about this later, but I, along with Councilwoman Gilbert, Councilman Kabachi, and Councilman DeHaas, attended the Carroll County Veterans Independence Project ribbon cutting event today, which was really well-attended, and was really nice to see this open. Even though it's just outside the city limits, it's still going to provide some vital services for veterans in Westminster. That is all, Mr. President.
Alright, thank you, Madam Becker. Move on now to reports from standing committees. We'll begin with the Arts Council. Mr. DeHaas.
Thank you, Mr. President. Starting today, we have a unique sculpture exhibit at the Arts Council featuring our good friend Tom Sterner, and that's going to run from July, from June 14th to July More information is available on the Arts Council website, and the public is invited to a free reception on Thursday, June 17th, from 5:00 to 7:00. And then also exhibiting this summer in the community gallery will be a show called Adapt and Inspire, and this is the annual exhibit of the Carroll County Public School art teachers, and it's always a really, really fun exhibit. It'll be an eclectic mix of mixed media assemblage and collage and a number of different styles. The exhibit will be on view from June 28th through July 31st, and there'll be a reception for this exhibit on Thursday, July 1st, from 5:00 to 7:00. And that'll be my report, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DeHaas. I'm Mr. DeHaas, Economic and Community Development. Mr. Haas.
No report besides the fact that we're going to be working towards scheduling our first meeting, so that's it for right now.
Very good, thank you. I have nothing for the Finance Committee. Ms. Gilbert, anything for the Personnel Committee?
Nothing, other than our first meeting will be on June 23rd.
Actually, I take that back. Thank you, Ms. Gilbert. I did want to mention that Mr. Deutsch and Ms. Colson and I did have a conversation this afternoon with the folks from Wide River Associates to just begin sort of talking through, you know, how we're going to take a look at figuring out what to do with the 15-plus billion dollars that the city is going to be receiving from the federal government in two chunks over the next year or so. First of which is relatively imminent. We'll be having a meeting of the full Finance Committee soon with them. They wanted to get a better idea of what we were looking for so that they can report back to us in a meaningful way before we get everybody together, so we'll have that session soon, and we'll be sharing more information with all of you in the near future. With that, we'll move to the Public Safety Committee. Mr. Kabachi.
Couple of brief things. Number one, there was a couple incidents of some cars being broken into in a few places around town that was all able to do the good, hard work of our police department to be tracked back to one individual specifically. He was arrested, I believe, for the second time, the right chief doing the same thing. Hopefully, the courts will see it a little differently this time and maybe keep him out of town for a little longer. They also did identify a suspect related to a couple of graffiti incidents here in town, which is also good, so that's a positive thing. Lastly, the chief and deputy chief and some of the other folks within the department have been doing a good job gearing up for some community outreach events now that we can do things out in public again, you know, that the pandemic is behind us, so they've already got some things scheduled. I know you'll probably talk a little more in your report about that, but you know, they're making a real concerted effort to make sure that they're working hard to continue to have that good relationship that they enjoy. I know the mayor mentioned something about the bike patrols, and you know, they're very cognizant of the fact that it takes work to continue to have that kind of good relationship with the general public, and they're working hard to make sure that continues. And I'm certainly very supportive of that. I know Councilman Huff is as well as all of us are. So that's it, Mr. President.
Alright, thank you, and Mr. Kabachi. Public Works Committee.
So, Public Works, we, the only real thing I'm, real thing I'm going to report on is we're making some headway related to our Pure Water Initiative, so that's a very positive thing. We've got some tentative things lined up relative to public information related to that project, and Pure Water is our water reuse initiative, and I believe things are going well on the actual physical side, is physical the right word? I guess the practical side of that application, but we're making some headway on the public forward-facing part of that, and there'll be more information to come soon related to potentially an event and some things like that to kind of kick it off. So things are moving forward, and obviously, we need to continue to keep pushing that because of course I think we're all in agreement that ultimately that's going to be very helpful for us relative to both water supply as well as sewer, because it potentially helps address both of those issues. So that's all I have for Public Works, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Kabachi. Recreation and Parks. Mr. DeHaas.
Thank you, Mr. President. The installation has been completed at the Tahoma Farm Park, and we're looking forward to having a ribbon cutting for that sometime soon. It's just absolutely fantastic if you, anyone has a chance to stop by and check it out. It's a really neat art installation. And we are not going to have a meeting in June. We're going to look forward to a meeting in July. The Recreation and Parks Advisory Board's a very exciting board, and I'm really excited to work with those folks. I believe that'll be my report. Perhaps Ms. Gruber can elaborate later upon the Tahoma Farm Park, because it's really cool. Thank you, Mr. President.
Alright, thank you, Mr. DeHaas, and I have nothing from the Technology Committee. We'll move on now to council comments and discussion. It's the opportunity for council members to raise any other issues that aren't part of a committee agenda that they wanted to share with the Congress, and we'll begin with Mr. DeHaas.
We've had two really neat events in town recently. You know, the autonomous vehicle event was really good. It was really well-attended. I think we've discussed that before, but I also, I don't want to take anything away from Ms. Gilbert, but the Carroll County Veterans Independence Project reception this afternoon, really exciting to see so many of the community players there. And being a Vietnam-era veteran myself, I really appreciate the public's attitude towards veterans. It's a little bit different from when the war was over for us, so thank you, Ms. Gilbert, and thank you for the Carroll County Veterans Independence Project for that. I think that'd be my comment. I've also gotten a lot of really positive feedback about the bike patrols. I really appreciate that. That's been, that's been good. That's been some really exciting stuff. So that'll do it, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gilbert.
Yes, I have a couple of things. I wanted to, since it's been, I feel like it's been like forever since we're sitting here, but it's only been like two and a half weeks. I want to thank those who participated in the Memorial Day commemorations at the Westminster Cemetery and the Vietnam Memorial. I, like many in Westminster, were disappointed that for another year COVID postponed the official parade, but we are kind of looking forward to next year when all the ceremonies will occur to honor those who have died serving in the military, and that the American Legion will have the complete parade for us. I want to thank the Officers and Public Works Department who helped with Art in the Park this year. Art in the Park seemed like it was a great success. It was a beautiful day, so it was great to see folks about in the community and in the lawn, across the parking lot, and I want to thank the vendors that were willing to Also, this past weekend, I participated in a Eagle ceremony, and scouting always has held a piece of my heart, myself, my daughter, my son, we were all scouts in some way, shape, or form. And this past weekend, it was a great outdoor Eagle ceremony, and I want to wish Carter White a best wishes on his endeavors. And like several of my colleagues have reported, today was the ribbon cutting for the Veterans Independence Project Veteran Center. I was honored to have participated in the ceremony, but also pleased to have a new nonprofit join our community to offer another source of assistance for those in need. Carroll County does a great job in collaborating with other nonprofits and to help those in need in our community, and I'm a huge proponent of wraparound services and excited for them to join in with all the other talented, caring folks that we have in our community. There can never be enough resources to help anyone, so I'm excited to add them to our list of resources. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Gilbert. Mr. Kabachi.
Just following up a little bit with both Councilwoman Gilbert and Councilman DeHaas related to Carroll County Veterans Independence and the mayor, she mentioned it too. It was a great ceremony, I agree. It's good to have all these services. One thing that I did want to bring up publicly, I know that I sent an email to all of you just to kind of give you a heads up because it was going to be talked about today. Councilman Huff and I met with them, the Carroll County Veterans Independence Project. I guess he's the executive director, is that what's side up? We met with him, and he took us on a tour of the facility at the end of last week, and it led us to a discussion relative to potentially looking to put banners out on Main Street for Veterans Day and potentially then subsequently next year, Memorial Day. Obviously, Veterans Day would be an opportunity to have some banners for currently serving on active duty or folks that previously served, if their families or loved ones wanted to honor them or organizations wanted to honor them. Could also be deceased service members also that would be honored on that day. Memorial Day obviously would be for fallen veterans, but we talked about potentially partnering so that the Independence Project could use it as a fundraising vehicle, and then of course the benefit for the city is it would look really great, and it's a way for the city to help that organization. They can, they can use it as a fundraiser, plus it's something I think that we, most likely, I think most of you would agree, would be kind of a pretty cool thing to have downtown. It's pretty common in a lot of towns. I know when I drive up to Indiana, Pennsylvania to visit my one daughter at school, it seems like every town I drive through during Veterans Day around that time, they have those banners up, and it just looks really neat. It's, I think it's a cool thing, and hopefully, all of you will agree. Maybe what we'll do is, my thinking, and if you guys want to give me your feedback now, or if we want to talk about it in a future meeting, I'm thinking that, you know, as Public Safety, I'm sorry, Public Works Chair, I can kind of coordinate that with Mr. Glass and the Independence Project, and we can kind of work together to figure out how many poles there might be, what it will take on your part to potentially do it. It'll probably be the same locations, we put Christmas decorations up, you know, the same poles, maybe different hardware, you know, we'd have to talk about, you know, that potentially. The way I would envision it is the Independence Project would manage all the money side of it, they would purchase the banners, they would take the money, they'd use it as a fundraiser. Our only responsibility would be, one, allowing them to use the poles, and then two, the man-hours to put them up, the bucket truck and the guys to go up and do it. So there's an investment on our part. My suspicion is that it would be something that your department would probably be at least somewhat honored to do, you know? I mean, it's a job, but, so there'll be a cost to the city, obviously, in labor, but no, there should be no real cash outlay from the city's part. So again, I know this is telling you it's a big surprise, Annie, because I did shoot an email out, but I guess I'm sort of laying the groundwork to get your permission to move forward with this, with the Independence Project. Maybe we do that in the form of a resolution, or, I don't know. I mean, or we just all say, okay, hey, yeah, we're going to make it happen. You know, maybe that's good enough.
Well, why don't we, why don't we do this unless anybody has an objection? We'll have the Public Works Committee go ahead and look into this, and I think, yes, have some conversation with staff, including Ms. Van, about how all this works out, and report back to us, and with the best path forward.
Sounds good, Mr. President. Thank you very much.
Alright, thank you. Mr. Haas, anything you'd like to share tonight?
Mr. President, nope, nothing additional.
Okay, thank you. Just like to make one observation myself. I read an article over the weekend about Corbett's Charge, and I think all of you will rec, will recall it. It's been some time back in 2003, I was on the council at the time. We'd been talking a lot about Corbett's Charge and its historic significance, and you know, Westminster's little, little important role in both Civil War and larger national events, and we decided that we wanted to start commemorating that. So the city created a commemorative committee to start planning an event, which has gone on for many years, became more formalized over the years, and I really am not sure what the city's actual role in making any of this happen anymore is, but, and I don't know exactly what's happening this year, but I did see an article, see the article that for some reason there's been some hiccup in terms of the way the event usually transpires, which is that the encampment usually takes place here on the grounds here at City Hall. It was noted in the article that for some reason, if somebody knew who was involved in that was unable to support it. I certainly don't think that was on the city's part. I can't believe it would have been, so I don't know what's happened. You know, I just wanted to express my concern that it's being interrupted this year in that regard, but I think it's a fine tradition, and we're glad to celebrate it, and in no way, I hope, was the city responsible for that happening. And you know, perhaps we can work with whoever needs to be, you know, work with to make sure this just doesn't happen again in the future. That's my observation, but certainly not, I think, you know, any desire on the part of the city for it not to happen. And I think that concludes our council comments and discussion. Under bids, we have one item, approval of the ERP conversion to Munus software, and for that, we'll return to our Finance Director, Ms. Colson.
Thank you, Ms. President. Approximately 10 years ago, the city of Westminster implemented the Eden software provided by Tyler Technologies as the ERP system. Recently, Tyler Technologies has made Eden customers aware that they are no longer going to be providing updates to the software. This will result in Eden becoming obsolete and eventually unusable as technology changes. Staff obtained quotes from multiple companies, Tyler Technologies, GovSense, Accufund, and OpenGov. Out of those companies, it was determined that Tyler Technologies, GovSense, and OpenGov offered solutions that would meet the needs of the city. Of the three quotes provided, Tyler Technologies provided the most favorable option. The other two quotes were approximately double the price of Tyler Technologies. At this time, staff recommends that the mayor and common council approve the attached software as a service agreement with the Tyler Technologies for implementation of the Munus software program. I am available for any questions, should you have any?
Thank you very much, Ms. Colson. May I have a motion on this?
Oh, the move. I'll move it.
Second.
Motion by Mr. DeHaas to approve the bid, and a second by Mr. Kabachi. Are there any questions from Ms. Colson, or is there a discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. DeHaas.
So I understand that what is being proposed is going to work well with the Beacon system also.
It is compatible.
Okay, Mr. Glass? Yeah, okay, because that's been a hang-up in the past, so maybe, okay. That's my only question.
I thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Glass, did you?
My question is just so I have a better understanding from a budgetary standpoint. I'm assuming we're paying some sort of recurring fee right now for existing software, is that the case?
Correct.
So the recurring fee that we're going to be paying, is that already included in this upcoming year's budget number?
Yes.
And the, and the number is, matches or in line with what the recurring amount is going to be?
The amount budgeted for this year, upcoming year, was the amount that would cost for Munus.
Okay.
So that's been accounted for.
And then for the implementation cost and the conversion cost and all of that, where is that coming out of from a budgetary standpoint?
From the CIP, from the capital projects.
Okay, so, and that, that, was that specifically allocated for the upcoming year?
Yes.
Okay, so all of this has been covered within the budget for the future year, and I have to apologize because I'm new.
That's correct.
These are just questions that occur to me as I'm reviewing this to have a better understanding.
Yeah, yep, it has been in there, and it's something that technology and I have been discussing for quite a few months because we knew it was coming, and rather than wait with everybody else jumping ship, we wanted to be proactive and get ahead of the, ahead of the curve, so that's why we had planned for it for this upcoming budget year.
Okay, and you all are very comfortable with the software as far as, because I, full disclosure, my wife works in IT, and I know sometimes you have this impression, whatever the cheapest thing is, is what we should do, but you don't want to just do the cheapest thing, you want the thing that's going to work.
Correct.
Because sometimes you can get, you know, sucked in for, and then there's extra fees down the road. So my impression from reading all the documentation is that you all, not only is this the least expensive alternative, but you're very happy with the software.
Correct. We all sat through three or four days worth of demos of the various modules and whatnot, and it seems to be pretty comprehensive, and will definitely meet our needs.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Right, thank you, Ms. Colson. Thank you, Mr. Haas. And I neglected to mention that the Finance Committee had been thoroughly briefed on this, the previous Finance Committee, Mr. Haas, before you joined the council and the committee, so you obviously have not been aware of these things, but Ms. Colson has been consulting with us regularly, which is along the way.
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Kabachi.
So I wanted to make one quick comment. You know, I, the implementation cost is pretty significant, but not shocking given what software costs, but I have to say, the reoccurring fee is less than what I would have expected it to be. We just went through this with my company. We had to, we, it's, it's a nightmare, first of all, doing this transition, but I know, given the size of my company relative to the size of this operation and what we're paying for a reoccurring fee compared to what I pay for a reoccurring fee for my company, I'm surprised how low this is. This is actually pretty reasonable, given the scope of what we're going to be running through this software, which I know you don't usually hear coming from me very often in terms of saying. So I'm actually pleasantly surprised that it's, it is, it's $70,000 a year. I assumed it would be significantly more than that on a, on a, per an basis, because that includes all the support and everything, right, that we're going to need. Yeah, so I'm pretty pleased about that, honestly, Mr. President. Thank you.
Maybe Ms. Colson needs to start doing your negotiating.
I think, I think she does, yeah.
Thank you very much, Ms. Colson. If I don't hear any further comments or questions, I think that we're ready for the vote. All those in favor of approving the bid, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The ayes seem to have and the ayes have it, and the bid is approved. Thank you, Mr. President. We have three items tonight under ordinance resolutions. The first one is adoption of ordinance number 934, amending chapter 164, zoning and subdivision of land of the Westminster City Code, Article 1, general provisions, Article 8, B Business Zone, Article 10, IR Restricted Industrial Zone, Article 11, IG General Industrial Zone, Article 12, PI Plan Industrial Zone, Article 18, Regulations applicable, I studied my regulations, Regulations applicable in all districts, and Article 20, Special Provisions to allow a new solar collector and facility use as permitted use or special exception use. And for that, we'll turn to Mr. Deepa.
Thank you, and good evening. This is some background, on April 12th, 2021, ordinance 934 was introduced to the council at this meeting. The council referred the ordinance to the Commission for Review and Recommendation. Following this meeting, staff Following this meeting, uh, staff was able to meet with some solar businesses, older energy systems and Paradise Energy Solutions regarding the proposed tax amendments. And as a result of these discussions and collaboration with these representatives, uh, E E Z, or I'm sorry, planning staff, amended the draft text to address some of their conditions, and these amendments are referenced in the staff report itself. These amendments were then present, and the, and the ordinance was presented to the commission on May thirteenth, twenty twenty-one. Uh, at this meeting, the planning commission recommended approval to the council uh, with, uh, sub- subject to specific changes. Um, these included, one, allowing the new solar facility roof mounted use as a permitted use in the B zone, IR zone, IG and PI. Initially, it was as a special exception. Also to allow modifications or flexibility for solar collectors located on non-flat roofs. Uh, just to explain that real quick, um, we require that, the ordinance requires that a non-residential or commercial building throughout the, regardless of zoning district, can allow a solar collector on the roof, um, as long as that solar collector is providing energy for that property. Uh, we started getting some phone calls and some actual applications that are looking at these, uh, use, this use itself, and they were on slanted roofs. So staff did add some flexibility with the rewrite, um, to address non-flat roofs for these uses. Now, if you're a single family house and you want solar collectors on your roof and they have, and you're providing power solely for your property, that's by right. Uh, you just submit your permit to go through. This does not address those. Those are just, that's, that's fine. They're good to go. I'm sorry, so, and so with that, uh, E E D staff, D C P D staff recommends that proposed ordinance nine thirty-four provided in attachment five, and this is page two oh two of the staff report, as recommended to the mayor and common council by the Planning and Zoning Commission for Approval from the May thirteenth, twenty twenty-one meeting, and is further amended as referenced by the planning commission and in the staff report, be approved by the mayor and common council, and I'm available for any questions that we have.
Um, thank you, Mr. Depot, and thanks for that great recap. Um, let's, uh, get a motion on the table here. Uh, I mean, a motion for adoption. Have a motion.
I'll, I'll move, Mr. President.
All right, thank you. There's been a motion for adoption by Mr. Kavachi. Is there a second?
I'll second.
And the second by Mr. Hock. Uh, any questions for Mr. Depot or any discussion?
Mr. President. Mr. Depot, if they are generating more energy than what they're consuming in the commercial building, that, that's not allowed?
That would be allowed. So that's, the solar collector is, I'm providing solar for my property. There might be, through the way it works, one, 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 like
Yeah, depending on the music and all, sure how sunny it is. Yep.
But principally, it's provide power for your site. The solar facility is that utility essentially. I'm providing panels on the rooftop for sale.
And, and so it could go back into the grid.
Yes, it could go back to the grid.
It's really specifically built for that, not.
Exactly.
And, okay, and we're saying that, 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 that's going to be okay.
That would be permitted by right in those specifics of the districts, those commercials, and that, and that follows the state program. And that's what somewhat, that's what started this whole discussion.
Pretty dire need for electricity right now.
Yes.
Yep. Just want to make sure I was completely clear on what, what I'm looking at.
Good, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kavachi. Uh, any other questions or comments, discussion? I think this is something we've all discussed before and felt pretty positive about. Um, I'm not sure that we need the
Mr. President. I do have one question. So, and I was, I was just, because one, I do not know, so you're going to educate me on this. So what happens, say, the business who has the solar panels goes out of business? Who then becomes responsible for disposing of, or would it be the next buyer of that business that would take over their solar panel? Like, kind of what happens at that transition time? Or are they, like, what happens if they're left?
And that's, so for the solar collector, is that not so much likely? It's providing power for the site. You would assume anybody buying it was just, is also buying the solar panels. The solar facilities does state in the regulations that if they cease to exist, if that company doesn't operate anymore, they had to remove it. The company itself would have to then remove those panels from the building.
Okay.
And there's always that option that if another entity wants to come in, certainly would allow that, so removal wouldn't have to happen. But if they were to leave and just move, um, there, it is providing their
There is a provision. Okay.
Very good, thank you.
Mr. President.
Mr. Dayhoff.
So is it bonded?
No, it is not.
Is that something we may have, we may want to, we may want to think about?
In the case that, in case they do knew, we would want them removed?
Yeah.
Having given too much thought about that, I don't know if we want to do that.
I've been reading, I've been reading a lot about that recently, uh, about abandoned solar panels because the technology is changing so rapidly, um, and with economic turmoil. Um, there's been some panels left up on top of rooftops. So, I mean, I don't know if we, I mean, I'll, I'll defer to your judgment. Uh, perhaps it's something we can look at in the future.
Well, the ordinance and just for intent purposes, in case the question comes up, the idea is to try to provide as much flexibility.
Yeah, yeah.
Ability to modifications in this. If it's not clear, that is the intent in case this comes up in the future. Um, so, but ultimately, there is that regulation that the zoning administrator can ask for more, so we don't necessarily have to add it in the draft text, but if, if that is something that we want to look at in forward, this is something we can do as part of that approval process.
Mr. President, I would like it looked into.
All right.
I do.
For Mr. Depot, we'd like to do that for us.
I do.
Thank you.
Mr. President.
Mr. Hock.
My comment, uh, Mr. Depot, is that, um, correct me if I'm wrong, the, the solar facilities are, um, are going to be smaller in size. When we dealt with this on the county level, we were talking about acres of solar panels. And there, we did have a bonding requirement when we were talking about that at Carroll County Planning and Zoning. But this is a much, strikes me because we're within the city, a much different animal because we're not going to be having acres of solar fields within the city limits. Correct me if I'm wrong.
Correct. Again, this is
Roof mounted, there's only so much, you know, so I, I, some of what, um, Mr. Dayhoff might have been reading about past is talking about when you have these larger scale facilities where you have five to ten acres or fifteen acres of solar panels, then definitely you don't want to abandon solar panel field twenty years from now. Um, but this is much more limited in scope. Correct me if I'm misinterpreting.
You, you are not satisfied. This ordinance is sold for rooftop only. Uh, we felt that orange ground mounted is just isn't appropriate in the city setting. It is more appropriate in the county when you have more land available, uh, for such use. But it would be rooftop only, but, and we can certainly, again, look into how other jurisdictions handle bonding of rooftop equipment.
Cause, you know, a roof, you know, managing commercial properties like I do has a limited life as well. So if I have solar panels that go up on my roof, you know, thirty years from now, or depending on the roof, fifty years from now, you're going to have to address it at some point in time anyway. But you would have the flexibility within the ordinance, the way it's drafted, to put that requirement if, depending on the nature of what you're looking at, and I think it's important we have some flexibility here.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay.
Okay.
Mr. President.
Mr. Kavachi.
Yeah, kind of dovetailing with, with Councilman Hough is saying, you know, I, 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 I agree, this is, this is a different animal than a field. And, I mean, we don't make people bond out air conditioning units that they put on top of their roofs and worry about what they're going to do with them later, and I don't really see this that different. Um, it's a piece of equipment. It's not, it's not, uh, you know, the, the, it's not an environmentally dangerous item that's going to be less of mine that we're going to have to deal with like a, you know, abandoned gas tank underground. I, I, I think it's more from a, maybe a visual perspective, if it's on a slanted roof or a flat roof, you're not even really going to see it. Um, so I, I'd be reluctant to try to hem them up with too much requirements and bonding and things like that, because I think we, I think we, I think it's a positive thing. I think we all agree that there's a need for it, and if a business has the opportunity to generate a little positive revenue by using their rooftop, you know, to do so, I, I, I'd like to see that happen with as, as little encumbrance as possible. Um, because again, I, I, you know, I think that I'm not looking at that, that a lot of, a lot of commercial roofs have lots of equipment on top of them already, and we don't, we're not, we're not going to try to dictate to them what they've got to do. You know, if the building sits vacant or is abandoned or something like that, so I don't see this any different. That's it, Mr. President.
Right, thank you, Mr. Kavachi. I noticed, Mr. Depot, that in the, um, well, supplementary material providers, a couple of places you've mentioned, um, a requirement for decommissioning plan um, that some communities have, and I don't see that reflected in our ordinance. Is that something you'll do administratively?
That's something we could do administratively, yes.
Okay, very good, thank you. And, um, I know that you had at least one guest on the screen, and I, there's a gentleman here. Did you require an additional discussion on this from anybody else?
No, I, no, I mean, I'm, I'm available for any questions Mr. Power has or this gentleman.
Because we don't normally take questions during class sessions.
I always got to ask a question. I was going to let you know that I own race-based bicycles and it is my roof that's
Okay.
And if anybody had any questions about, I truly expected two other guests today from Paradise Energy Solutions.
She should have taken that.
I should have taken you on that bet, John.
But I do know some of the things that, I mean, can I answer some of the things that are out there or not?
Uh, well, we usually don't.
That's fine.
Usually don't do that. So I think we're, I think we're pretty good shape.
Well, just, uh, if I could, uh,
Mr. Depot.
I did contact, uh, the gentleman that, uh, the company is working with, and their text as written would allow the solar panels on that property.
Okay, very good. All right, thank you. All right, is there any further discussion? I think we've got a pretty thoughtful ordinance here. Um, and Mr. Depot is prepared to follow up with a couple of things that may be necessary administratively. So I'll play to the vote. All those in favor of the ordinance, please say aye.
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 Those opposed say nay. The ayes seem to have it, the ayes have it, and the ordinance is adopted. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
There's panel one.
Let's get some power, sorry. Uh, the next item is adoption of amended ordinance number nine thirty-five of the mayor and common council of Westminster, Maryland, approving and adopting a budget for the fiscal year beginning July first, twenty twenty-one and ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. We haven't even gotten to July first yet, sorry. Go ahead, anyway, Ms. Colston.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, as you're aware, in accordance of Article Two of the Charter of the City of Westminster, the city administrator prepared a proposed budget on behalf of the mayor for the common council's consideration. And as such, ordinance nine thirty-five was adopted on May tenth, twenty twenty-one. During a subsequent review of the adopted ordinance, it was discovered that an old version of the ordinance was inadvertently used instead of the final correct one. As a result, the adopted ordinance needed to be revised. The net change to the general fund is an increase of one dollar. At this point, the recommendation is that staff recommends that mayor and council adopt the amended budget ordinance number nine thirty-five. And I'm available for questions. Should you have?
Ten, ten questions, Mr. President.
This has already cost us more than that dollar. I would have gladly given her the buck to make it all go away. Any questions from Ms. Colston? Well, let's get it, let's get a motion. We have a motion, please, to adopt.
Only Mr. Kavachi could introduce this.
Like, Kavachi? I'll move to, uh, that, Mr. President.
The motion by Mr. Kavachi, man, I'll second.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Mr. Dayhoff. Um, anything, um, any questions from Ms. Colston or anything anybody would like to add? Or should we waste more time on this? Doing nothing will move on. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed say nay. The ayes seem to have it, the ayes have it, and we have a fixed the budget. Thank you. And now, uh, the next item is for introduction of, um, um, ordinance number nine thirty-six and ordinance amending chapter seven, boards and commissions to add article, um, is that a six, article six, I guess, Westminster Fiber Commission to create an advisory body generally charged Is it four?
A four.
I guess it's a four, it's a very small
Oh, it's a small V.
It's a small V.
Small V, yeah, it's a small V, yes. All right. Um, and article four, Westminster Fiber Commission to create an advisory body generally charged with matters relating to the Westminster Fiber Network. May I have a motion, please?
I'll move.
Second.
The motion by Mr. Dayhoff and a second by Ms. Gilbert. Um, this is being sponsored by Mr. Kavachi and the mayor, so I will let them, uh, have a first crack at any comments on this.
Madam Mayor, I've been doing a lot of talking tonight.
I, I'm happy to take over, um, for a bit. So, um, what this ordinance is proposing to introduce is a, uh, commission to, um, work on the Westminster Fiber Network, um, not within the city. We have a pretty good handle on that. Um, but there would be three goals of this mission, a short term, medium term and a long term goal. Um, the short term goal would be for the, uh, commission to, um, begin, and this has already started, um, but would follow us up to begin to expand the Westminster Fiber Network outside the city. Um, there's about eight thousand additional households outside the city that are on city water and sewer uh, that are primed for, uh, the Westminster Fiber Network. Um, and so the first order of business would be to get as many households of those um, outside, outside the city limits, um, signed up with our fiber network here. Um, the medium term is to, uh, really begin to collaborate with the county to extend to some farther areas uh, within the county, and so the county has a fiber, uh, broadband fiber, um, from sort of location to location, um, and the, the goal would be to work in with that um, and to work with the county, so it would be a great collaborative effort, uh, with the county. And then, uh, longer term goals, uh, possibly create a regional fiber network. Um, you know, can we even expand, uh, a little bit farther for that? The ordinance would call for a commission of, um, seven members, um, that would have helped, uh, advise, uh, myself and Councilman Kavachi, uh, on some of the work and, um, to really do a lot of the networking uh, for the fiber, um, and to help improve our, our fiber project. Sort of envision this sort of longer term goal.
All right, thank you.
And I'd be happy to answer any questions about it, um, that, that anyone might have, uh, for the introduction.
Can I, can I just add one thing to, Mr. President? Um, and, and I, I think one of the driving, the, part of the impetus behind this is that we, as often is the case, don't always possess all the expertise and information to make the most of it. So we rely on other folks to help us. We do that with staff all the time where they're telling us as the experts, you know, kind of what their opinion is, and we weigh that. I think we're trying to use this as a vehicle in which we can gather information to, you know, as a group, when I say group, the six of us, um, or six future elected officials, where they can rely on people who really have more expertise and understanding um, related to this specific issue that can advise us, very much like our other boards and commissions do. And we don't really have that right now. We don't have a, a collective group of individuals that have the expertise that we need, uh, but they're out there. They're in the community. Um, and I, I believe when, if and when we adopt this, um, the mayor will come back with recommendations to populate this entity with people who will be able to give us that advice. So that, that's, that's as much what we're looking to do here as anything. Because this organ, this, this board or commission, I should say, is not going to have any authority to, to ultimately do anything. The authority still rests with this body. They're going to be an advisory, uh, uh, commission for us.
Yeah, a little research arm that's going to go out and do that.
And, and they'll certainly be talking to folks. I would envision they will, they will meet with people and, and talk about things and get balls headed in the right direction, but none of it's going to happen without our, you know, without it coming from this body.
Mr. President.
Mr. Hock.
The, the only other two comments I wanted to make, uh, just to kind of reemphasize the importance, what I believe is the importance of this, uh, commission is, you know, obviously there is a lot of funding floating around out there. Um, and, you know, I, I would argue that, um, you know, Westminster was ahead of the curve, uh, with fiber. And I think that we want to, you know, exploit, uh, the ability to expand the fiber network uh, to provide, you know, the kind of great service we have within the city to uh, our residents that are not our residents, but are the residents that are on our public water, public sewer system. Um, and there might be some funding opportunities, uh, to help accomplish that that simply were not around when we originally did the fiber network, uh, within the city limits. So I think that's an important point, uh, when we're thinking about this and the importance of this. And also, I just want to emphasize, uh, it's been an issue that I've heard talked about at some of the national conventions I've been at related to real estate. And then the pandemic kind of really accelerated that. Uh, you know, fiber is becoming the new public water, public sewer. It is critically important. I know during the pandemic, when I was at home, uh, with my great internet service and I had my two children and my wife all working at one time and had no issues. I'm talking to I'm talking to friends that live with, outside the city limits, that are having all kinds of issues. Um, so I, I think the pandemic has really exposed how forward vision Westminster was with their fiber network. And if we can now offer that and help, and frankly, work with the county as well to help, uh, help the county out to be able to provide that quality service, uh, outside the semi-city limits, that, that is just a great thing to do. And to have that collaboration. So I am obviously fully supportive of us, uh, you know, forming this commission. And I think, as Mr. Cavaci says, you know, we need the expertise. Uh, conceptually, I love it. Uh, but we need to have a commission filled with people that really understand this really well. So, anyway.
But, thank you, Mr. Hoff. Any, any other thoughts?
No, Mr. President. I, I was going to say something, but I think all of my colleagues have, have hit the nail on the head with everything from.
Listen, come back in a few weeks and you'll have a chance to go first next time.
That's okay. That's okay. Don't mind. I think we're all on the same page, to be honest.
Very good. All right. Hearing nothing else? We'll run the vote. I reminded that this is for introduction only tonight. All those in favor of intro, introducing ordinance number nine thirty-six, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, say nay. The I C M to have it, the I's have it. And, uh, we will schedule this for adoption at a future meeting. Thank you. Um, next item on the agenda is unfinished business. There is no unfinished business, which I'm aware, unless anybody else has any. We want a new business. Uh, the first item of a new business is approval of the vaccination incentive program. Ms. Colston.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, during the council meeting on May twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-one, Mayor Mona Becker's Becker suggested providing an incentive payment to employees who have received or will receive the coronavirus vaccine. A coronavirus vaccine incentive of a hundred dollars will be available to all full-time city employees. Employees must show their completed vaccination card to H R and sign a pledge to receive the booster when available in order to receive the incentive. Funds for the incentive will come from a contingency account in the Legislative and Executive Department of the twenty twenty-one budget. At this time, staff recommends reserving funds from the fiscal year twenty twenty-one contingency account in the Legislative and Executive Department budget to be used for a vaccine incentive in the upcoming budget year. And I am available for any questions, should you have any?
Thank you, Ms. Colston. Uh, Mayor Becker.
Um, yes, the, the one thing that I do want to change.
Okay.
Uh, sorry, um, is also, um, also, um, regular part-time employees as well. So, um, so it would be there's, there's about, there's four, I think.
Okay.
Or so. So it would be regular full-time city employees and regular part-time. Yeah, city employees. Um, the, you know, the only thing I, other thing I, I'd just like to say is that when we think about, um, you know, and I had mentioned this, I think, at the last council meeting, um, we were all virtual. Well, no, we weren't at that point in time, and six of us weren't. But, um, you know, with, with vaccine incentives and when we think about moving forward, um, I think about sort of the Public Works Department, uh, public safety, uh, those sorts of issues that that would be a difficult, uh, for us, um, to face many of our employees being in quarantine at the same time or being, uh, ill at the same time. Um, and, uh, it would keep the workplace safer. I think it would make colleagues feel safer, uh, and customers, uh, as well, since the city is in the the business of, of public service, so.
Good. Thank you, Mayor Becker. Any other thoughts, questions, comments? Um, I believe, I guess we need a motion just to approve, um, the, uh, the incentive, uh, program. Now a motion?
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to approve the vaccine incentive program, uh, with the understanding that it would be full-time employees and the regular part-time employees. Thank you, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Hoff. Is there a second?
A second.
There's a sec, uh, motion by Mr. Hoff, and it's seconded by Ms. Gilbert. Any discussion? Um, Madam Mayor, I would assume that, uh, because vaccines are easily and readily and quickly available in our community these days, as, as opposed to the way they once were, um, doesn't take a long time to get signed up and and get in line and all that, that, uh, you know, part of this, although we don't need to put in policy cards, would be, I would hope that we would encourage all of our department heads and supervisors to encourage their staff to go and get them if they have not yet done so, and take time to, you know, if they're at work, to run out and get their vaccine and come back to work.
Absolutely.
Mr. President.
Mr. Cavaci.
On that note, do we want to put a time limit on this?
Oh, on how long this lasts? Yeah.
An end date.
I see what you have.
A certain date.
This end in the summer? Do you want to say?
End of August.
End of September, end of September, I'm fine with that. End of September.
Okay, how's that?
I actually have a, I'm in September, yeah, end of September.
A little incentive to get it done. All right. Any other comments or questions?
So do we need to modify that motion, or no?
Uh, while we just, without objection, the, um, uh, you know, and they shall be, you know, the end of September. Twenty twenty-one. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll move on to the vote. All those in favor of approving the, uh, uh, employee coronavirus vaccine incentive program, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The I C M to have it. Um, and it is adopted. I have to note, unfortunately for, uh, former Mayor Dominic, uh, some of you wanted to participate, but he will not be eligible to come and show us.
It's not for elected officials.
It's not for elected. Whoa, 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 whoa. Tell them that hundred bucks.
You gonna beat the beer barbecue, Joel?
I am.
I'll buy a beer.
And more could you ask? All right, thank you. And I conclude that item. Uh, the next item of, uh, inside of the business is approval of Warner Construction Change Order Number Twenty-Five. How many numbers can we get to, Mr. Glass?
Hopefully not more than twenty-five. Um, as you're aware, Warner Construction is the general contractor for the work at the renovation of forty-five West Main. Before you was proposed change order number twenty-five, and it's comprised of, uh, three work items and one electricity use credit. The first item is, uh, approved, already approved, change order number four, which was, uh, unfortunately, had not been forwarded to finance for payment. Um, this, that work, as you may recall, was for testing and repair of existing line sets for, um, some remain-in-place HVAC equipment and also for some rock excavation or, uh, flat pole foundations at the building. That cost was fifty-six hundred sixty-two dollars thirty-three cents. In addition, and again, that has already been approved, but not yet paid for. So, um, this was, uh, came from the architect, is, uh, still has change order number four twenty-four. Really should be change order twenty-five because twenty-four is already approved, and we have a few more items to, uh, kind of tidy up. But the next item was, uh, additional tactile ADA signage that was required, um, during county inspection. And that total cost was thirteen hundred four dollars and thirty-one cents. That's in, uh, as well. We had, uh, unfortunately, some landscape repair costs of six hundred seventeen dollars and ninety-eight cents to repair and replace, uh, some damaged work and plant material that was caused by a vehicle, uh, which ran over the curb and into a landscape bed. Um, and, um, and as I understand it, we know, um, at least, um, one, the, one of the perpetrators, and we're investigating that for reimbursement as well. But nonetheless, we will have to pay the, uh, the contractor the six hundred seventeen dollars ninety-eight cents until then. The last thing is, uh, a much more usage credit. As you know, the contractor was responsible for utility bills um, up until the time of substantial completion. That amount, um, was nine thousand eight hundred thirty-nine dollars and ninety-three cents, which will be a credit. And overall, once we go, um, back to include the, uh, unpaid change order number twenty-four and the additions, um, this actually turns into a, uh, an overall credit of eighteen hundred forty-three dollars and fifty-eight cents, just due to the canceling nature of the ads and the, and the deducts. And so at this point, we would recommend that the common council approve the, uh, change order number twenty-five and the credit amount of eighteen hundred forty-three dollars and fifty-eight cents. This amount will also be, um, we, and another thing I probably should mention, this change order needs to be finalized so that the credit of eighteen hundred dollars will be included in their rest pay request as well. So that will be a deduct to end their rest pay request. This was necessary in order to get the, that rest pay request. If I'm available for questions, you have.
Thank you, Mr. Glass. And we have a motion on, uh, change order number twenty-five.
I'll move, Mr. President.
Thank you. The motion by Mr. Cavaci to approve, I presume, that change order number twenty-five. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Hoff. Uh, any discussion or any questions, Mr. Glass? On what he
Mr. President.
Suggesting may well be the last change order. Yes.
Mr. President, since, since this is possibly the last change order, I'm assuming we're narrowing down to the end of the project. So I have a question. It doesn't really necessarily coincide with this change order, but I'm just curious. When you look at the front of the building, the letters B, B, and T are very clear on the front of the building.
True.
Is there any thought as to maybe covering that up or blending it into the wall a little better? Because just as a normal, everyday person looking at it, it looks kind of tacky.
I agree. I admit.
I, I agree a hundred percent.
So we paid for a change order to have the building detergent washed and, and pressure washed as well. Um, and we're not satisfied with the results of that work. That's supposed to remove that, not just that, but other items on the building that, uh, um, and the overall dinginess that, uh, that the appearance has, um, in places. So we're aware of that.
Okay.
And, um, and hopefully we'll be able to take care of that, um, get it resolved with the, uh, with the contractor then.
Okay, thank you.
Punchless stuff.
Okay, thank you. I, I know we're getting down to the end, and I was just curious because after spending everything that we've spent on it, I kind of hate for three little letters to make it look kind of weird. And, yeah.
Correct.
Your, is your expectation that doing the job properly should be able to take care of that?
Well, that was the idea behind it. So, well, again, we're, I'm not satisfied with the work as, as has been done so far. So second try. Um, hopefully we'll be going by that.
Okay, great, thank you. All, um, all those in favor, unless I hear any further discussion, we'll move on to the vote. All those in favor of approval of change order number twenty-five, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
And, and all those opposed, say nay. The I C M to have it, the I's have it, and the change orders appear. Thank you. Uh, Mr. Cavaci, you have a motion?
Mr. President, I have a motion to go into a closed session under the statutory authority to close a session under the Maryland Annotated Code of General Provisions, three dash three oh five B, one, to discuss the appointment, employment, assignment, promotion, discipline, demotion, compensation, removal, resignation, or performance evaluation of appointees, employees, or officials over whom this public body has jurisdiction or any other personnel matters that affect one or more specific individuals under, uh, subsection seven, to consult with counsel to obtain legal advice on a legal matter, and of, under subsection eight, to consult with staff, consultants, and/or other individuals about pending or potential litigation. The reasons are to discuss legal, you know, for, uh, counsel related to P and Z, and outside counsel regarding, uh, some other public works matters.
Thank you, Mr. Cavaci. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Hoff. There's been a motion by Mr. Cavaci and a second by Mr. Hoff, uh, to go into a closed session. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, say nay. The I C M to have it, the I's have it, and the, uh, mayor and council go into a closed session at the conclusion of our regular meeting. Now it's time for departmental reports. To begin that, let me say, Mr. George, welcome. It's a pleasure to see you and all of your team members and a hearing person with us tonight.
Thank you, Mr. President. Let me start this evening with Mr. Davidson.
Yeah, and just letting you know the camera work, we got a camera project. I started, we're just waiting on a couple pieces to finish up. Did have training today, and, uh, I think it was two hours after one, so the cameras on, uh, do graffiti people, playground, and capture like, both those cameras.
The Historic District Commission and Water Zone Appeals had no items for them this month, so they were canceled. The planning commission had a sole item that was an increase, the amount of permits allowed for Stonegate, uh, subdivision. They're allowed forty a year, the increase of Al's Gate additional. My understanding, they will want to come back for even more, uh, which is a good sign. They're developing out pretty quick, the site. And we have water already set aside for them, so that's not an issue.
Got to make hay when you can make hay, right?
Yeah. We did receive a grant, um, from the state, from Main Street, uh, through the COVID, to provide some extra funds. We didn't get, we did, we weren't able to provide funds to twenty-six businesses in downtown Westminster of the twenty-five cent dollars per grant. Um, and we are working with the finance department on getting that money, getting those monies out.
Mr. President.
Mr. Cavaci.
Could we have a list of those who received that funding, please?
Absolutely. I do have a list. I was, I was planning to send that out, too.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, this is my report.
Thank you, sir. Chief.
Good evening. So I know it was in the newspaper, and Councilman Cavaci mentioned it a little bit earlier, but, uh, we just wanted to remind everyone, um, that if you lived in the Stonegate, around Webster Street, Fembie Farm, or Meadow Branch neighborhoods, and you did not report, uh, a theft from auto, uh, we did end up charging a, a gentleman for, um, a series of thefts from autos in those neighborhoods. Um, so please, uh, contact us, uh, on our, uh, non-emergency number of, if you have any information related to those. Uh, we are planning a community cookout. We've been collaborating with, um, um, part of our, uh, local community contacts to do an end-of-school, um, event tomorrow from five P M. to eight P M. At the Charles Street Tot Lot. So if you live, uh, close to there or a resident want to stop by, we're going to have, um, barbecue, food, drinks, and, uh, some entertainment. Um, all the food and drinks were donated by local businesses, so we thank them. Myself and Captain York attended a, uh, Maryland Chiefs of Police and, um, uh, Maryland, uh, Police Commission Training Session last week to discuss all the, uh, legislation that was passed, uh, during this previous session that will affect the, uh, Police Department and Operations. And, um, uh, on the good note, we're well ahead of the curve in many aspects. I think, um, will, will require, uh, little policy change on our part. There are some training requirements, um, some things that we're going to have to figure out moving forward that are going to be developed at the commission level, uh, um, such as a mental health evaluation every two years for all of our officers, um, a physical agility testing program on an annual basis and how that'll work. So there are a lot of specifics that, uh, were brought up question-wise as far as, you know, workers comp, uh, injury, you know, what happens if somebody doesn't pass, you know, what's the, uh, process there? Um, there is also a new, they repealed the law enforcement officer's bill of rights completely. Um, and in its place for a, for citizen-generated complaints, they've tasked the counties for putting together, um, an accountability board and a charging, uh, board or panel that is going to be appointed at the county level that will then, um, essentially be making personnel decisions for the municipal employees. So I would, um, request that, uh, when that process is occurring, that at the municipal level, we get involved in, um, that process, seeing that the outcome will directly affect our, uh, municipal employees. Uh, these are all issues that were discussed and are, um, germane to everybody across the state of Maryland. Uh, fortunately, um, a lot of it does not go into place until July one of twenty twenty-two. So we, we do have a, a bit of a window, uh, to plan for. Some of, uh, some of it does go into effect October first of this year. Um, the things that are, are going into effect this year were pretty much set and in place, uh, ready to handle. Um, I know several of you brought up the, uh, bicycle patrol, and I, I thank you. Uh, we just purchased from Racepace, uh, two, um, e-bikes that, uh, we were able to obtain some grant funds through the Governor's Office of Crime Control and Prevention to purchase. And I've been using one of them, and I can say that, uh, you know, at fifty-three years of age, I've been able to get from Stonegate all the way over the greens, down to Fembie Farm, and with very little effort. So I think it's been great because I'm able to hit the neighborhoods, the back alleys, you know, have a lot of good citizen interactions. And we've just trained, I think, five additional officers on it. I know the chiefs get trained. So I think that combined with our regular bike patrol was ideal for the community. And that's all I have.
Can we get a council version of one of those bikes? Of course, it would have to be heavy duty. It needs an extra battery pack for me.
You'd like to ride a bicycle, you let me know. I'll get your bike for a few weeks.
Chief, I assume this is the, this is the police interceptor. This is the police interceptor version with the special gears and you see a lot more power, high speed, right?
Yeah, the e-bike, the premise behind it is when you need the boost on the pedals, it gives you that little bit of extra boost. And depending on the amount of battery that you draw on, you can go anywhere from eco to turbo. And so, you know, some of the hills in that way are pretty steep. So I've been very thankful. I think it's a great tool.
Pretty good.
Thank you, Chief. Mr. Colston.
Thank you. I have nothing to add tonight unless you have any questions.
Thank you. Let me go to the other side of the room. Ms. Gruber.
Good evening. I am happy to report that the pool renovation project was posted to the city's website and email at Micro Place on June eighth. We do have a mandatory pre-bid meeting scheduled for June sixteenth at ten AM. So that is moving productively forward. On June seventeenth, our municipal pool opens for seven day a week operations. We're only able to open on the weekends until Carroll County Public Schools lets out because that's where most of our staff come from. So we're looking forward to getting fully into the swing of things for our pool season. Of course, as we've talked a little bit this evening, on June nineteenth is our beer and barbecue stroll. We had our logistics meeting today for setup with our streets department. So everything is adequately in place for that event. We again are watching a forecast that seems a little unsettled. So fingers crossed that, you know, maybe we paid it forward enough during Flower and Jazz that we'll have a decent Saturday. And on June twenty first, our ten week summer day camp program begins. And so we are looking at welcoming sixty young people into our Westminster City Park campus for ten weeks to take us into the end of summer. And as Mr. Dayhoff, Councilman Dayhoff addressed in his Recreation and Parks Report, we are planning a special grand opening celebration at our new Tohoma Park Playground installation on July thirteenth. And that will be held in conjunction with the Recreation and Park Advisory Board. So we're looking forward to officially welcoming our community to that playground on the thirteenth of July as part of our Recreation and Parks Month celebrations. However, it is open to the public now. And this concludes my report unless there are questions.
Mr. President, Mr. Kavachi.
I've had two different people come up and thank me for that part. Two, two separate instances. I of course told them both I didn't have much to do with it other than just voting yes, but so it's already getting a lot of positive feedback.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Mr. President.
Mr. Dayhoff.
It's like an art installation. It really is. It's cool.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's way cool. Maybe we can get the mayor to come down there with her podium. Give a presentation at the, the parks opening.
A three minute talk.
Three minute, three minute talk with your podium.
I'll have to go down the slide.
Maybe, oh, okay.
Mr. President.
Ms. Gilbert.
Well, I, I am excited to see it in person now because seeing it in paper and seeing it in person is amazing. And I know at one point in time, there was a part two. Is that still a possibility or probability or is that, is that for the future to be seen based on funding?
If you can obtain funding for it, it will happen. Any funding opportunities available to us at this juncture, but there will be an opportunity to apply for community parks and playgrounds funding towards the end of summer.
Yeah, cool. Not that you don't have plenty on your plate right now anyway, but I just thought I'd ask.
Thank you. Yes.
Tell me so fair and it's the.
Mr. Glass. So we have three projects that are completely enclosed out. These are the annual paving project, the ADA curb replacements, and the both parking garage rehab projects as well. The Difindol parking lot retaining wall is underway. Maybe in driving by, you may have seen there, right now they're working on re-pointing the brick sections that are exposed. They're doing that while they're waiting on the precast concrete to be delivered. So the hope was to have that completed by the end of June, but alas, I don't think that's going to happen. I think there was some pull up with the with the precast. If it comes in in time, you still may make it, but I would, I would say we're probably not going to at this juncture. The info infiltration project is moving along quite well as well. It has been slowed a bit due to the amount of groundwater that they've encountered, which is the exact reason why we're doing info and infiltration project. It just makes the lining go a little bit slower, but it's really good that this is additional water that we're keeping out of the sewer system. With regard to reuse, all of the components, the individualized components that make up this treatment train are all connected. Most are operational. We did get, received a setback with the delivery of some ultraviolet radiation lamps that were delivered. So we really can't put that part online yet. And so I can't say the whole thing is completely operational until, until we get these new lamps. They're expected next week. We will, later this week, CMC will be on site to do some, some videography as well. It's referred to as a B-roll footage. That work will be included in some video that will have produced later in the, in the, in the process. The idea behind that is that, you know, while we're operational, you can have as many tours come through and show as many people as you can show, but when it's over, it's over. Once, if we have a video that we can keep on the website or have available for, for the future, that'll last forever then, or as long as we want to keep that going. So that's what the B-roll is, is set up to do now is to show kind of the beginning parts of the assembly and calibration and that kind of thing. So we're pretty excited about that as well. Councilman Kavachi made mention of some informational materials that we have generated and they could be go out and the, the next award bills. Matter of fact, I think it's within a number of days that, that that will go out. It's introducing the project to, to the users of the system and hopefully we'll answer some questions and let everybody know what we're doing. That's, that's all I have unless there are questions for me.
Mr. President.
Mr. Dayhoff.
So we're still making some progress though with the I and I. If I'm not mistaken, I think I asked last week during the height of the rainstorm, we had what a, a GPD of about nine point one gallons. Is that what it was?
Nine point one million gallons.
Yeah, million gallons.
That's correct. And in a rainstorm like that, what's?
We would have had more in the past.
Close to twenty probably.
Yeah, yeah, because we're rated, we've built it to twenty two.
It's, we've passed twenty two million before.
Yeah, yeah. And we had nine. So that's.
A significant reduction. This is so, a little bit of background, in, in year twenty eighteen, our average flows through the treatment plant were between six and six and a half million. It's designed for five, actually. And I was just down there the other day and the normal, relatively normal flows were at the low four, four million, four point one. And so that's a rather significant reduction from the twenty eighteen. It's a reflection of the money that's been made available and the work that we've been able to do to, to make the reduction in the extreme groundwater. That's, it doesn't need to be treated, shouldn't be in the sewer system. Once this phase three I and I is complete, it's, we're going to see significant changes there again.
That's great.
Mr. President, another follow up. When we finish with the, the gravity wall at Difindol Lot, Ms. Gruber and the Recreation and Parks Advisory Board, we're going to come forward with a mural project on that. And that'll be exciting too, because I think that's going to be really important to economic development. And I think having some murals in downtown Westminster, I think will be a really good thing to really add. So we'll start working on that. I think that's all the questions I have, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dayhoff. Very good, Mr. Thank you, Mr. Glass.
Mr. Pecoraro, I don't know whether the two staff members who are with us tonight are on via Zoom or not. That would be, Mr. Brown, this is called.
Does not appear that they are.
Okay, I'd like to just make one comment, Mr. President, and that is to, to mention that city sent out informational material to various commercial entities regarding the implementation of the plastic bag prohibition effective July one. We sent out material over the past two weeks. We have not had a reaction from those companies that are affected as council recall, you passed an ordinance two years ago and then deferred it to, to avoid additional COVID impacts on businesses. And you also recall that this does not apply to most mom and pop businesses, if you will, small entities, restaurants, takeouts are excluded as well. So it affects large retailers and we're prepared to assist them as they raise questions based on the information that was provided. Thanks, sir.
Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Dayhoff.
But I've gotten a lot of really positive feedback about the plastic ban. And interestingly enough, we may have exempted many of the smaller mom and pops, but they're the ones that many of them are the ones that are already providing paper bags. Many of the restaurants are providing paper bags and it seems to be accepted really well. I think it's extremely important that we do that for the environment. And once again, we're the, we're the leader in the area for that. So, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Right. And although she didn't give a report, Ms. Lavand, it's always a pleasure to see you as well. Thank you for coming back.
A pleasure to be here.
All right. And so that is loser departmental reports. Thank you, Mr. Deutsch. Great to hear from everybody tonight and to see so many of them. Now the last item on our agenda is citizen comments. And this is the time during the meeting when we invite the public to address the mayor and council on any issues that pertain to tonight's agenda or any other city issues. During the virtual meetings, we've been asking people to send their comments to our city clerk at comments@westgov.com. We will continue that practice for those who are unable to attend meetings in person. Commenters should include their address and phone number with their comments and we'll continue to, to share them as appropriate. I do have one virtual comment that we did receive for this meeting. And that was from a Mr. John Dancy on the WTTR lane who writes, I have a question concerning future meetings. The live stream of all the city meetings on Facebook has been a very valuable resource to keep citizens connected through COVID, and I wanted to reach out and ask if the meetings will continue to be streamed. With restrictions lifted on COVID, there are still people in town who can sometimes not make it to a meeting due to scheduling conflicts, work schedules, physical disabilities, and the lack of transportation. Since the technology is already in place, I would like to see these meetings continue to be streamed for those who cannot attend. Thank you. And I'll just reiterate what I said at the outset of the meeting, which is that it is certainly our intention to continue to live stream these meetings. We, we do understand that it's a valuable service. We were surprised at the number of people who are watching during the pandemic. And while I'm sure the people have better things to do with their time, now that the pandemic is ending, I'm sure that there will still be people who want to tune in or perhaps, perhaps even catch recordings. Is there anybody who would like to be heard tonight who's present? Yes, sir. Please state your name and address for the record.
Alex O'Brack, and I own Racepace Bicycles. So three or four things that came up tonight, I'll make a comment on first. I appreciate, everybody likes the fact that the police are riding bicycles. I really like the fact that the police are riding. Thanks for those, thanks, Chief, for riding. Thanks for you going out and riding and thanks for buying from us. Somebody, somebody just mentioned plastic bags. We haven't used plastic bags in any of our seven locations, Racepace Bicycles, for over twenty years. We use a portable bag and we have for, I think it's twenty two years now. So we've never given a customer a plastic bag. And as a small business owner, in fact, I'm giving a talk at the Greater Baltimore Business Council on Wednesday pertaining to sustainability and things of that nature. So plastic bag ban is, I'm all in on that. And thanks.
Can I recall you shared that with us, finally adopted the ban?
Well, I think I did.
You did. Yes, sir.
Yeah.
And, and thanks for moving forward on the solar. I endeavor to have the buildings I own within my seven stories all are getting solar this year. This is the only one in Carroll County, but I was surprised to find that we weren't moving forward on this contract because it wasn't allowed in the city. And I'm glad that council and, and moved quickly. I guess that was, are we good to go there?
Once we have it signed and.
Great. That was it. Thanks very much.
All right. Thank you very much. Anyone else like to be heard? Yes, sir.
Kevin Wagman, one fifty three East Green Street. This is the first public meeting normal people, except I'm not normal. All right, well, and so I wanted to welcome Mayor Dr. Peffer and Councilman Hoff. And also congratulate Mr. Kavachi on being reelected. And also thank you three that were to keep these three. It's not easy. And I also wanted to thank Mayor Dominic and Councilman England for their last four years of moving Westminster forward. I have one other thing. Mr. Glass, you mentioned that we were done sidewalk safety things. Now on Court Street, we installed one, but they never painted the lines on it. So maybe they can do that. They are old lines further around the corner, but they never connected where the yellow pads are. I only know that because I walked the streets and the alleys. Other than that, no one would ever know unless they appear in court over at Court Street. Hopefully, even though my picture's out of that post office. Thank you and good luck.
Thank you, Kevin. Thank you.
So if I could respond, actually two different projects there. One was a contractor to do the, the ramp itself and the street department to do the lines. That's, and the lines will come with lining of all the other parts of the streets as well. So that's, it, it's in motion. It just hasn't happened just yet.
It wasn't a complaint, more so because we as a city are lucky to have all the men and women in the street department. I said this before, maybe let's say there are nine thousand cities in the US. I would think eight thousand nine hundred would be lucky to be in the situation Westminster is. We, as our city sent for only thirty nine years, what a blessing to have a city like this.
Thank you, sir.
All right, Mr. Wagman, thank you for those kind words. And with that, I think that will conclude our agenda and the meeting. Our next regular meeting will be canceled due to some members of the elected body as well as some staff attending the Maryland Municipal Annual Conference at the end of the month. And so our next regular meeting will be held on. And so our next regular meeting will be held on Monday, July twelfth. And with that, without objection, we are adjourned. Thank you all very much.